We'll call this meeting to order the Blackhawk County Board of Supervisors for May fifteenth, two thousand and eighteen. Will call Mr. Peter.
Little.
Here.
Layland.
Here.
Maxman.
Here.
Schwartz.
Here.
White.
Here. Have a moment of silence to reflect on the actions of the day. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Have the agenda received.
So.
For his minute.
Second.
Move to second any discussion. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
The proposed motion carried. Public comments. Anybody from the public like to comment on anything other than that's on the agenda? Moving on to claims and payments. Approve expenditures for the county. Susan?
The county expenditures this week total two million, five hundred and twelve thousand, one hundred and fifteen dollars and seventy-seven cents. Two, five, one, two, one, one, five point seven, seven. Two point two million of that is the second distribution to the mental health region for this year. Motion to approve.
Second.
Move to second any discussion. This is a resolution. Please answer your name as called.
Layland.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Maxman.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
White.
Yes, resolution adopted. Next is a resolution to approve expenditures for Country View.
Country View's expenditures this week total three hundred and one thousand, eight hundred and eight dollars and seventeen cents. Three zero one, eight zero eight, point one seven. Approximately two hundred and seventy-six thousand is for April benefits.
So moved.
Second.
Move to second any discussion on this item. This is a resolution. Please answer your name as called.
Little.
Yes.
Maxman.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Layland.
Yes.
White.
Yes, resolution adopted. Next is to receive project updates from department heads and elected officials. Good morning, Kathy.
Good morning, Board.
Morning.
Kathy Nicholas, county engineer. The gravel roads are in pretty good condition right now. We have completed nearly all of the preparation for, on the gravel road so that the dust control can be applied. So if residents are receiving dust control, that should be, the vendor should be in the areas, in the area in the next week or two to apply the dust control. Water has receded on all of our roadways now throughout the county. The rivers have receded. Very minimal damage to any of the roadways. Nothing that can't be fixed with the motor grader. Can I answer any questions at this time?
Thanks, Kathy.
Thank you.
Any other department heads, elected officials? Moving on to minutes approved for May eighth, two thousand and eighteen.
Second.
Move to second any discussion. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
The proposed motion carried. We have hearings at nine oh five and nine oh seven. Nine oh five for a construction permit application for CFO and nine oh seven ordinance number seventy-seven, two oh five, rezoned request by Maher and Spinner Incorporated. Next is consent agenda by resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Move to second any discussion on any of the items. This is a resolution. Please answer your name as called.
Maxman.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Layland.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
White.
Yes, resolution adopted. Next is contracts and agreement. This is a resolution that master service agreement between Blackhawk County and Aces, providing licenses for software, hardware, support and maintenance services and/or subscription services at a monthly recurring expense of nineteen thousand, eight hundred and twenty dollars be approved as recommended by Kim Beter, IT Director.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions?
I guess, you know, we've looked at this, whether we want to bring this back in-house or whether we continue on with this contract. I think until we have a plan in place to address how we would bring these services back in-house is that we need to have this contract with this company. I would fully support bringing it back in-house, but it really needs to be addressed at budget time.
Well, it should have been addressed a year or so ago.
Two years ago.
Two years ago. It's just lingering on and it's costing us a lot of money.
Well, I think that in the long run, it's probably going to cost us more running, bringing it back in-house, but then that's to be reviewed.
But we have control of it that way.
I understand that, yes.
Ms. Peter, you have anything?
No.
All right. This is a resolution. Please answer your name as called.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Layland.
Yes.
Little.
No.
Maxman.
Yes.
White.
No. Resolution adopted. This is a resolution that the health services assess an administration agreement between Blackhawk County and the Preferred One Administrative Services Providing Employee Health Insurance effective July first, fourteen, including the amendment effective July first, two fifteen, be approved and directed by Debbie Bunger, Human Resource Director. Those.
There actually is this.
Morning, Board. Debbie Bunger, HR Director. This is, so last year when we had our new outside auditor come in, they had wanted to see an annual agreement for Preferred One. When we did that, we, when they asked for that, we started to look for it and realized that they didn't do that on an annual basis. And not only did they not do that, this original agreement got prepared but never signed. So this is really more of a housekeeping item. Pete has reviewed it as well. So we're just kind of catching up now and we will be doing the amendments every year just as amendments.
Stacy Wonderside with Perspective Consulting Partners. Nothing to add to that. It really was just a housekeeping or a cleanup item going back.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So move on to resolution.
Second.
Any further discussion? This is a resolution. Please answer your name as called.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Layland.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Maxman.
Yes.
White.
Yes, resolution adopted. This is a resolution at the amendment number two to the summary plan description between Blackhawk County and Preferred One Administrative Services. Were both seven hundred and fifty and five hundred dollar deductible. Medical options effective July first, sixteen, be approved as recommended by Debbie Bunger.
So moved.
This amendment is also just incorporating into our SPD a service that we've already been providing. Again, it was an oversight that they didn't realize. Anything that we're providing as a service should be addressed in our SPD. So when we started doing those virtual office visits that they allowed us to do, we thought it was wrapped into our amendment that year into our renewal and it wasn't. So this is also more of a housekeeping. Actually, number four is, is just a new item. The next one is a new item.
Second.
Move to second any further discussion? This is a resolution. Please answer your name as called.
Layland.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Maxman.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
White.
Yes, resolution adopted. This is a resolution that the amendment number four to the summary plan description between Blackhawk County and Preferred One Administrative Services were both seven hundred and fifty and five hundred dollar deductible medical options effective July first, eighteen, be approved as recommended by Debbie Bunger, HR Director.
This is an amendment that, you know, worked with Perspective and Preferred One on, again, getting in our SPD. We have had a longstanding past practice, even when we had first administrators of allowing certain qualifying events for people to make changes. We have a, particularly when it comes to our open enrollment period, it's different than the majority of people out there. And so a lot of times we'll have somebody who wants to drop their child at open enrollment for them. It's voluntary on that person's part, but the child is left without it, so it's not voluntary. We allow them to come on our plan. Preferred One said that that language actually isn't in our SPD. So this is clarifying qualifying events that we allow. There are some that are mandated that we have to do, but these, there are ones that are optional for us and it's always been our practice to allow it. So we also just, again, want to cover ourselves and make sure if we're doing it, it's in our SPD.
So moved.
Second.
Move to second any further discussion? This is a resolution. Please answer your name as called.
Little.
Yes.
Maxman.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Layland.
Yes.
White.
Yes, resolution adopted. Next is a resolution that the change order number one received from Kelly Demolition and Escavating LLC for the demolition of its two thousand and sixteen plugged buyout property, fifty-four oh seven Whedon Road, in the amount of five hundred and ten dollars be approved and direct to chair design for same.
So moved.
Second.
Move to second.
In this change order, there was a additional driveway that was about two foot underneath the driveway that they could see when they bid on this project. As they uncovered the site, they found a second driveway underneath it and they had to remove that and rebury it. So that's what the change order is for.
What was the second driveway? Did it have concrete as?
It had concrete over top, but then there was about two feet of dirt and a second driveway. Talking to some of the neighbors, that's not uncommon to see.
That had to be taken out then?
Right, according to FEMA's.
A motion and a second on the floor?
Yes.
Any further discussion? This is a resolution. Please answer your name as called.
Maxman.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Layland.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
White.
Yes, resolution adopted. Other business. This is a resolution that the lowest reasonable bid received from Kluzenner Construction, Farley Iowa, for fiscal year nineteen, crack seal slurry and level and bridge joint clean and seal at various locations of Blackhawk County with a bid of fifty thousand, one hundred and ninety-four dollars and twenty cents, be approved as recommended by Catherine Nicholas, county engineer.
So moved.
Second.
Move to second. Any questions for Kathy?
So as you know, this was an informal bid. We had budgeted about approximately fifty-five thousand dollars. And we did receive two bids, one from Kluzenner Construction and then another one from Farner from here in Iowa, from Dubuque, Iowa. The Farner bid was eighty thousand, nine hundred and seventy dollars. The Kluzenner bid, as you can see, was approximately fifty thousand dollars. I'd recommend that we take the Kluzenner bid. They've done a lot of crack sealing for us in the past and they do produce a good, a good product. So I'd recommend that you accept their bid and then we can be allowed to move ahead to contract with them.
So moved.
Second.
A motion. A motion and a second any further discussion? This is a resolution. Please answer your name as called.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Layland.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Maxman.
Yes.
White.
Yes, resolution adopted. This is a resolution at the renewal of the National Insurance Services Madison National Life for the county's group life insurance, ADND insurance, voluntary life insurance rates for fiscal year nineteen and twenty, and long-term disability insurances rates for fiscal year nineteen, be approved and direct to chair design for same as recommended by Deborah Bunger, HR Director.
I'm going to let Stacy speak to this as she did quite a lot of work on this project. So the life insurance is guaranteed for two years, but there's no rate increase. So we were able to maintain the rates. Same for the long-term disability. However, instead of a two-year rate guarantee, it's just a one-year rate guarantee. Madison National is a little bit more conservative on long-term disability, so they typically do one-year renewals, though we've had really good experience with them. So happy with a no rate increase.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Move to second. Further discussion? This is a resolution. Please answer your name as called.
Layland.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Maxman.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
White.
Yes, resolution adopted. This is a resolution at the reinsurance renewal with HM Insurance Group effective July first, eighteen, be approved and direct to chair design for same as recommended by Deb Bunger, HR Director.
I do want to share with the group that we did look at alternate reinsurance as well. We're renewing, we're recommending to renew with HM reinsurance. Though we did have an eight percent increase to the premium on the reinsurance, I want to let you know that the health plan overall, we had projected an increase of five point five percent and we ended up with two point three percent. So it was one of the best renewals that we delivered this year to any public entity that we work with across the state without having to make plan design changes. So this was a very favorable renewal.
Motion to approve.
Second.
So he said that this was an eight percent for the reinsurance. Can you explain that, what that covers rather than your health insurance?
Yep, so the reinsurance is protection that we're buying for the self-funded plan. So this reinsurance protects us against from losses overall if the actual claims come in over a hundred and twenty-five percent of what the insurance company or the reinsurance company estimates. But it also protects us against large claims. So we have a hundred and fifteen thousand dollar specific deductible. So any individual who has claims, whether it be for one condition or multiple conditions or accidents or injuries, any of those things, anything over and above a hundred and fifteen thousand is paid for by the reinsurance carrier. So it mitigates the risk to the county and, you know, eight percent, medical trends running about ten percent on the reinsurance market. So we did a little bit better than trend on that reinsurance and it's really purely driven by the large claims experience that you've had here over the last couple of years when they underwrite that. But by having an eight percent on that, our overall claims, which is the vast majority of the plan expense, was lower than what we had anticipated. So that's why we're only really realizing overall a two point three percent increase.
Okay. Thanks for the explanation.
Any further discussion? This is a resolution. Please answer your name as called.
Little.
Yes.
Maxman.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Layland.
Yes.
White.
Yes, resolution adopted. This is a motion at the appointment of Brad Taylor as a representative for the engineers' office on the Blackhawk County Safety Committee be approved effective May fifteenth, two thousand and eighteen.
Second.
Move to second. Discussion.
Debbie. I was going to say Debbie, were you going to, you mentioned reevaluating this committee and the purpose. I was going to say, have you had an opportunity to do that?
Right, so, yeah, this is a committee that I chair and I've been in the process of just condensing it. Basically, it was quite large. And so when I, the first time I reshuffled, basically, I reached out to everybody. I didn't ask anybody to not serve if they were already on it. However, most people did step down if they really didn't need to be on it. And so the larger a group gets, the harder it is and less effective it becomes. And so this was an opportunity. Two people decided they didn't want to be on it. So Kathy and I met. We discussed, you know, which one to pick and.
What's final number then of the committee?
You know what? I'm sorry, I don't know that. Round seven, I think. I'll have to, I'll have to look at that. I don't recall.
How does the purpose of this committee vary or differ, I guess, from the individual departments? I know you said, mentioned to us that the departments would have their.
Yeah, and this committee, basically, will get together. We're working on, we're working on updating our safety policy and then we'll take it to policy review eventually and then hopefully to you. But it's actually a pretty big project, so I basically want people on there who know quite a bit about safety can take things back to their departments on behalf of the committee. And it's not that we don't sometimes even expand when I'm having a safety committee meeting, that we would have other people come as well if that add value to it. But I think the individual safety committees are a really vital part of the success of the county's safety program. So I really applaud what Kathy did with her program. She's got, set it up kind of similar to what Conservation has done, who does a really excellent job with theirs as well.
Okay. Thank you.
A motion on this. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
The proposed motion carried. Motion to direct the county auditor to advertise for a public hearing to be held on, at nine oh nine on Tuesday, May twenty-ninth, two thousand and eighteen, in Boardroom two oh one, County Courthouse, on a proposed sale of Country View Care Facility.
So moved.
Second.
Move to second. Discussion. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
The proposed motion carried. Motion carried. Next is a motion to direct the county auditor to advertise for a public hearing to be held at nine oh five on Tuesday, May twenty-ninth, two thousand and eighteen, in Boardroom two oh one, for the proposed purchase of a motor grader for Blackhawk County Engineers Department.
So moved.
Second.
Move to second. Discussion on this item. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
The proposed motion carried. This is a motion to direct the county auditor to advertise for a public hearing to be held at nine oh five on Tuesday, May twenty-ninth, in Boardroom two oh one, for the proposed vacation of Oxley Road.
So moved.
Second.
Move to second. Any discussion on this item? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
The proposed motion carried. This is a motion to direct, at the personnel requisition for the assistant county attorney replacement of county auditors, or county attorney's office.
Second.
Recommended by Brian Williams. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
The proposed motion carried. This is a resolution to rescind the bid awarded on April third, two thousand and eighteen to A and D Contracting LLC, New Hartford, Iowa, in the amount of forty-six thousand, five hundred for sidewalk repair and return the bid to security as recommended by Rory Givens, Maintenance Superintendent.
So moved.
Second.
Move to second. Any discussion on this item?
Rory, you want to indicate why we would rescind the bid?
You're here.
Yeah.
All carried. All carried. All carried. Good morning, Board. Rory Givens, Maintenance Superintendent. We are rescinding the bid from A and D Contracting. They were not able to fulfill the requirements of the RFP, particularly with the performance bond.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This is a resolution. Please answer your name as called.
Maxman.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Layland.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
White.
Yes, resolution adopted. This is a resolution that the bid received from B and B Builders and Supply Waterloo, Iowa, in the amount of fifty-six thousand, three hundred and thirty-six dollars and sixty-nine cents for sidewalk repairs be approved and direct to chair design for same. Is recommended by Rory Givens, Maintenance Superintendent.
So moved.
Second.
Move to second. Any discussion on this item?
Rory. Does it have a start date, Rory? Sorry, I should have stayed out there. Shut up. Um, yeah, actually, B and B Builders and Supply are currently working in this area so they can get started on this project right away. So it actually worked out well for us on this. Just also to mention, the original budgeted amount was fifty-seven thousand. So this project is still somewhat under budget, but we have a completion date, I believe it's June thirtieth per the RFP. So when I spoke with B and B Builders, they didn't have any issues with the, with the RFP as it was stated. So their bid goes in as it was originally supplied to us.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rory. This is a resolution. Please answer your name as called.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Layland.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Maxman.
Yes.
White.
Yes, resolution adopted. It is now nine twenty-three. It is a hearing on a confinement feeding operation, construction permit for Dale Weber.
Motion received. Place that file. Approved publication.
Second.
Move to second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
The proposed motion carried. Motion to close the hearing after oral, written comments are received.
Second.
Grant, any written comments?
No, sir.
Any oral comments?
My name is Ken Prowse. I'm with Pinnacle Group in Iowa Falls, Iowa. Dale retains our firm to keep him in compliance with the DNR and EPA. We, we did his original manure management plan, his original construction, and now we've prepared the expansion permit. He's taking, building another building exactly the same as the first one on the site. There's enough acres to meet DNR requirements on the manure plant and there's enough points in the matrix. I'm here to answer any questions you have specifically to the permit. Dale apologizes he had a scheduling conflict at work and was not able to attend, but.
Any questions?
I don't have any questions on.
Thank you, sir.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
The proposed motion carried. This is a motion at the master metric is submitted by Dale Weber's site be approved and direct to county auditor to submit an all oral and written comments.
Second.
Move to second. Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
The proposed motion carried. This is a motion at the application for one new twenty-five hundred, ten, A and D pit swine finisher confinement building at an existing swine confinement facility, Dale Weber's site be approved.
So moved.
Second.
Move to second. Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
The proposed motion carried. This is now a nine oh seven hearing. It is now nine twenty-four on the proposed ordinance number seventy-seven dash two oh five, Maher and Spinner rezoned.
Motion received. Place that file.
Second.
Move to second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
The proposed motion carried. Motion received, or motion underway. The first reading and its notice was published on May fourth in Waterloo, Iowa, in accordance with requirements of the Code of Iowa.
So moved.
Second.
Move to second.[1496.01]
Second.
Move to the second, any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed motion carried. This is a motion to close the hearing after oral written comments are received and placed on file.
Second.
Move to the second, any written comments?
No, sir.
You're on, Seth.
Okay. Okay, yeah, planning and zoning commission at the regular meeting on April 17th, 2018, previewed the request submitted by Maher and Spender, Inc. To allow for 3.35 acres of land from A agricultural district to C commercial district to allow for the establishment of a contractor shop. The property is located northeast of 9324, Osage Road. It was, yeah, and basically a request for rezon 3.35 acres from A agricultural district to C commercial district for the establishment of a contractor's business. It was moved by words and seconded by SAC to approve of the request to rezon 3.35 acres from A to C in order to establish a contractor business. Motion to approve carried, 5-2 with Nagel and Beck voting nay. The applicant requests to rezon 3.35 acres from A to C in order to allow for the new contractor shop on the property. The property would be for a rotor rudder shop and would be utilizing an existing pole building. The pole building would be improved and would be used as an office and a shop for the business. The current setbacks of the structure would meet those of a commercial building located within the commercial district. The rezon area is currently zoned A agricultural district, consists of agricultural grain bins, one steel utility building. A surrounding area consists of rural homes and agricultural lands and is zoned A agricultural to the north, east, south, and west. The, the city of Waterloo, city limits is approximately a half mile to the west of the Elk Run, Elk Run Heights, city limits is approximately a half mile to the south. The rezon area is designated as agriculture on the future land use map, a component of the Blackhawk County Comprehensive Land Use Plan. The properties to the south are designated as residential and remaining properties to the south, east, and west designated as agricultural. The site evaluation score is 91 and least a score is 233 indicating moderate agricultural value. Beck and Nagel expressed concerns over the location of the proposed business, noting that this type of business is better suited for incorporated areas and voted no to the rezoning request. And as Hiberger staff report.
What was Nagel and Beck's concern?
They were kind of concerned that, that the, the site is too close to city limits, that it's like only a half mile away and, and they questioned whether or not this business should go into an incorporated area as opposed to the county.
But, yeah, it was the night of the hearing.
Okay.
I have a motion.
Owner, oh, okay.
I have a motion on the floor to close the hearing, any other questions? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed motion carried. This is a resolution to suspend the rules requiring the board of supervisors considering vote on proposed ordinance at two prior meetings. Move to the second, any discussion? This is a resolution, please answer your name as called.
Layland.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Magsman.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
White.
Yes, resolution adopted. This is an ordinance adoption for ordinance remaining, ordinance number 27.
Make a motion to adopt the ordinance.
Second.
Move to the second, any discussion? This is a resolution, please answer your name as called.
Little.
Yes.
Magsman.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Layland.
Yes.
White.
Yes, resolution adopted. Thank you. Next, we have the on the agenda closed session for the resolution pursuant to provisions.
We'll let her say. You gotta read that on the session.
Eric.
This is a resolution pursuant to provisions that have a meeting law. Blackhawk County Board of Supervisors proceeding to close session with the attorney to discuss the purchase or sale of particular real estate only where premature disclosure could be reasonably respected to increase the price the government body would receive for the property or reduce the price the government body would receive for the property. Minutes in the audio recording of a session closed under this prayer grant shall be available for public examination when the transaction discussed is completed pursuant to Iowa Code 21.5.
Second.
Move to the second, this is a resolution, please answer your name as called.
Magsman.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Layland.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
White.
Yes, resolution adopted.
Second.
Motion to the second to come out of closed session, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed motion carried. Any reports or information from the board?
Um, just.
Go ahead and open the door.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Frank, sorry.
On the lean program, I know that we've had some slowing of the pace because of maternity leave and that we've had 5,000 put in for this fiscal year and for next fiscal year. I have been attending meetings with area businesses that are part of the lean consortium and we're due to host a, what they call lean coffee here for the businesses in the area. Come in and talk about what's working, what they're struggling with and how they can continue to incorporate lean into their businesses. So, I think we benefit from that. I think that we need to have more individuals participating in the lean process. We're going to continue this in the county. So, I think to expand those who are, are taking a leadership role in this will be important in the future, so.
As the HR director indicated, that Amanda can continue, and I know her plate's pretty full down there right now.
I haven't asked that. I think, talking to Susan, that she's in the process of looking at our strategic plan for the future and I think certainly lean should be something that we incorporate into that or use through the process.
Well, my intent of that letter or memo I sent out the other day is, is what I preached when we first started this. We have to, when we implement these programs, we need to do the train to trainer. We had money invested in Audra and taking her classes and stuff and she left.
Right.
And then we lost Amanda through leave. And so, I think the key to making this work in this county is get that train to trainer, so we've got multiple trainers within the county and we don't have to rely on one person.
It, it needs.
That leaves.
It needs to get to the point where it's in everybody's.
Sure.
Daily, day, daily operation is looking at how they can make lean, provide better services to citizens of Blackhawk.
It could be a good program, but like I said, you just can't have one person be the champion and nobody else, because they leave and then you're, you're back to square one, so.
I, I fully agree with that.
I hope they provide that kind of.
I think we just provided minimal kind of resources for it too, so I don't know if we wanted to grow it from that.
Yeah, and again, I don't know if Amanda's even going to be available, so.
Okay, thanks, I don't have anything else.
Okay, just letting you know, I won't be here next Tuesday. Me and Mr. Jamison will be on the flight to DC. We'll be landing right about now, or close to it, and.
That is for the honor.
Honor flight, yeah, yeah. Also, let you know that we helped with the food, food drive last, last weekend in Evansdale, Elk Run, and Maywood. And I was trying to get the final numbers. I know out there in Evansdale, it was a good response. Me and Randy Miller went back three times to the food bank and the once we went back, we couldn't, we had it piled up three, three heels high in the back of the truck, so. Did get out in Evansdale and Elk Run and Maywood, it was amazing.
I just wish you would've shut my door when you left after you took all the cans.
Anything else?
I won't go into what type of cans you removed.
I will, I will let you know that two or three times we stopped and on the ground there was a bag and got it out and it was full of beer cans and pop cans. Yeah, so, they're, they don't do you much good.
Five cents beef, you know.
Yeah.
There you go.
Motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second. Move to the second, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
We are adjourned.